I better turn that on. We got a rowdy crew back there. Thirty? Okay. Thanks, Lauren. Sergeant at arms.
Somebody asked her. You're prepared, Brian.
That's right. I told Katie I'll see her later.
Whenever.
Or she'll be asleep on the chair when I get home, trust me.
Brad's ready. Call the meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Teresa?
Nelson?
Here.
Orison?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Wunschel?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Balk?
Here.
Okay. Before we go to item three, just note to the public that Councilman Hanson is joining us via phone tonight, so there may be a little delay in some of his comments and votes, but we'll try to accommodate him.
Sounds good.
Okay. Item three on the agenda is an update on the Spencer Hospital project and Bill Bumgarner. From the hospital, the president, the CEO of the Spencer Hospital is here tonight to give us a report.
Good evening, everybody. I brought some help with me. I brought Brenda Teef and Toller, our senior vice president for patient care and operations, who is going to help with this. And before we dive in here, again, I'd very much like to thank the council and all of the city department heads for all the support and assistance related to this project. And we think when it's all done, it's going to make our community proud and enhance emergency services to our community and region. The kind of current status at this point, our architects are hard at work currently to prepare all the final documentation to have the project go out for bid. And we would hope to get bids back in the month of June and assuming all of that falls together well, to be able to move forward with the project yet this year in 2022. And with a completion date, it would be winter of 2023. Again, all things proceeding as everyone hopes with those type of projects. With that, I would just like to walk through very quickly some of the details of the plan. And what we have here is just an oversight of the current layout of the hospital campus and surrounding blocks. If we can go to the next one. And there we go. We pop in that new emergency department there on West 11th Street. One of the key aspects of this, of course, was to increase public access and visibility of the emergency department. If you could go to the next slide. And also, an aspect of this plan also was looking to the future as far as future campus development for the hospitals. As time goes on, hospital systems grow. And the hospital's been forward-looking in that regard as far as being able to obtain additional properties adjacent to the campus. Where it says future development there, right now, the hospital owns all the property except for one at the present time. And so, we see that as an opportunity to provide future development over the long term for Spencer Hospital. We very much like our location on the edge of downtown. And we like how it brings people through the downtown area of Spencer. And so, we want to do all we can to be able to plan for the future in that regard. We can go to the next slide. This gives you just a look currently down East 11th Street. And if we can go to the next one, there you go, with the new emergency department in place to see how that changes. Next slide, please. I just wanted to touch on is this project also gets into other campus improvement activities as well. One of the things that we need to do is upgrade a tunnel that runs from our kind of boiler area, physical plant area into the hospital. It's also where a loading dock area is. There's lots of semi-traffic over that. And so, it's time to repair that. We want to do some new things with our loading dock as well. We have four ambulances in our fleet. Three of them are on-site at the hospital. One is at the fire station. We need a new ambulance garage to store a couple of those units. So then, there's a lot, going to be a lot of elevation and site work in that particular area as well. So in addition to adding the ED, there's a few other improvements we'll be making as well as part of this overall project. Next slide, please. Just one thing I wanted to point out as well is that's important in the processes of care. In this particular, gives you an overhead sight shot of the hospital and some of the various services that are provided. And at the very bottom is the new emergency department. And with the red lines, it just kind of shows the adjacency to other important services within the hospital. When people come into the emergency department, many times, they need imaging, CT, MRI, that sort of thing. And really, it provides us the same level of access that we have in our current location. The center red line just kind of shows the traffic route into the central hospital as people from Avera Medical Group, Spencer, or what have you move through the emergency department into the hospital. And then, the last one on the left shows what the route would be into our surgery area. And that's another not uncommon type of traffic pattern if someone comes into the ED, needs an emergency surgery. Right now, patients kind of go right through the center of the hospital and what is also a public area. So it'll provide much improved privacy for that. Next slide. And this just gives you the, kind of the front-on close look of the aesthetics of the entry of the new emergency department. We wanted it to match other aspects of the hospital with kind of the rounded glass and the use of the granite-like looking rock and stone and that sort of thing as well. And it's much more aesthetically pleasing than our current emergency department. I think most people would agree. And this gives you an overhead shot of that as well, kind of looking down. To the far right is a two ambulance bay. And Brenda will touch on that here a little bit in just a few minutes. So this kind of gives you just kind of the overall overview of that. With the next slide, we start getting into actually some of the more clinical aspects. I'm going to have Brenda take care of that.
Good evening. You saw the outside, and now I'm going to talk to you about the working operations on the inside where the action happens. So this is a current layout of the new proposed emergency department. And the yellow there is the main area. So there's a public corridor there with an ED waiting area within that. We have what you call an onstage and offstage area. So if you have visited our current ED, everything is onstage. If you're a patient, if you're a family, if you're the doctor, if you're the nurse, we're all just right there in one big room. This allows the staff and the physician and those providing services to be on the offstage area, which is the center core. The outside areas are the rooms. Patients will enter from a hallway into the room. And from the center core where staff work, there'll be another doorway into the room where they can go in and take care of the patient. So we have six rooms here for patients. We'll have two behavioral health rooms that will be designed for any behavioral health patient where we have extra safety measures in place. And then, in the very back of the ambulance are two trauma bays. The large structure at the very end of there is the double bay ambulance garage. And so, currently, we have one garage, which will house one ambulance. So if we have an outlying service bringing a patient in, we actually have to have someone go out and remove our ambulance and pull it out so that ambulance can pull in. So this will allow our ambulance to be in there as well as an outlying service to pull in there as well. You can go to the next slide. This gives you a view of that main lobby. You can see lots of natural lighting. Again, if you've ever used our ED services, we have just a small little waiting area for patients and family. It can be very traumatic when you're waiting as a family member or a loved one for what is happening with their loved one inside the ED. And so, this is more of a aesthetically pleasing area for them to wait with some natural light. This is a lobby or vending area that would be within that waiting area. So there'll be vending machines there and an area for people to sit if you are waiting longer and you want to grab something to eat or have something to drink. Below that is a picture of the ED desk where patients would check in with the ED register to go back into the triage area. This here is a picture of our two trauma bays. So those were on the back of the emergency department. So where the ambulance garage is, if the ambulance pulled in with a patient, they will unload directly into those trauma bay areas. And this is what they look like. The nice thing about this is there is a doorway connecting the two rooms. So if we did have a true trauma where there were two patients in each room, the doctor can go back and forth between those rooms. This is a picture of just our basic six treatment areas or treatment rooms. And so, this is just a view of that room. Again, it's onstage, offstage. There's a door on each side. Staff enter from one way and patients and family from the other. You can see on the bottom layout there, we have that labeled. The two back rooms are behavioral health rooms, and I'll show you a photo of those shortly. In the front is what we call a triage room. So when you enter in and you're going to check in as a patient, we're going to take you back to a triage area and we're going to triage you to know where to place you within the department so that you can get the best care that you need. Currently, we don't have a triage area, and so we end up just doing that right in the room once we take you back. So that's a nice addition. Next slide. There we go. Behavioral health rooms. And so, just for a lack of a better term, a lot of people have probably heard this. It has what you call a garage door concept. So it can be a regular room, as you can see on the below photo. And then, if you need for safety reasons to secure everything that's in the room, you can pull the doors across and lower kind of another door, which we reference as the garage door to cover all of those to make the room very safe. There's also a window there, so it's called a viewing. And so, lots of times with behavioral health, we need to have eyes on at all times. And so, that window allows some privacy for that patient, but yet allows us to do the viewing that we need to view. This would be a picture there on the left of the inner core. So that's the offstage area. So it kind of aligns down the hall, and there are workstations within there. The bottom photo shows you nice places where we put our carts that have special equipment that we need, crash carts and things like that. And all the equipment has a nice storage area. That's where all the action will happen within there. So what this allows is a lot of privacy. It also allows it to be very quiet for the patients or families, not knowing what's going on within there. So it's just a nice kind of offstage area where all of the action can happen. That other upper picture was just a picture of a break room, which is something that we don't have a very awesome break room currently. And so, the staff are pretty excited about having an area to eat their lunch within the department. This shows you with the roof off of the two bay ambulance garage there. So it kind of gives you a flavor of what that's going to look like. And then, just another picture of the back of the ambulance there. And I think that is all of the photos. Again, this is just going to allow for quiet, lots more privacy, lots of extra room for the staff to work in. It also allows with the addition of the ambulance bay, just a lot more convenience for outlying communities that are bringing patients in for flight crews that are coming in and that sort of thing. Also, just want to reiterate the nice new pathways within the hospital to not be taking patients through a public corridor. So happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Brenda?
Yes?
Will the helipad be relocated, then?
The helipad will not be relocated. That's a very expensive project with a lot of extra regulations. So there is a nice direct line where they can wheel the patient right out to the same existing helipad. And it won't be in a public area currently. When the flight crew comes, they actually have to come in through the main entrance of the ED, right through the waiting area to get to the back. So it'll be a few extra steps, but because it's a clear path, it will be just as quick.
How many staff do you see adding to?
I'm not adding any staff to accommodate this. At this point, but don't tell Bill back here I said that. I have the right to change my mind later. He's probably eyeing me from behind right now, isn't he?
Yeah, he'll be okay.
Okay.
Brenda, question. The PET scan truck, will that still park in the same place?
It will. It still will come. It comes every Friday, and it will still park in the same location. Good question.
And Brenda, I know at one time, there was some talk of connection between the clinic and the new addition.
Yeah.
How will that?
So there is a photo of that. So if you look here, there is, and Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, like water line and sewer lines below.
Yeah. And I think there's also, what do you call it?
Electrical.
Communication, thank you, cabling as well.
So we were unable to connect the two buildings because of the cost of everything underneath of there that would have to be rerouted or a new spot. And also, if you do connect to that building inhoused or enclosed, then all of a sudden, that building has to meet hospital regulations, and that would also be an added expense. And so, as you can see, the two awnings there, there's probably just a very small gap there where the two awnings don't meet, but otherwise, you'll be covered when you're walking back and forth. It's also a lot closer than what it currently is because we're building on the street.
It probably would have been another $2 million in order to move the utilities. I'm probably ballpark on that. So we just decided at this point, especially given the kind of the challenges with supply chain and costs and those sort of thing, we were already really pushing our planned budget at this point. So that's the reason for that.
Okay. Any other questions for Bill or Brenda?
Bill or Brenda, could you touch on if the bidlet is in June with a completion tentative of winter of '23? When do you potentially anticipate the road being addressed or affected? 11th?
That's a good question. We actually have a meeting coming up within a couple of weeks with city representatives to talk about that. And I've been very direct, you know, with our team is we do not want to impact East 11th until the point that we absolutely have to do that to do work. And I don't want to speculate on a date because I think we just need to kind of noodle on that one because we want to come up with the best date. Because I know from a city planning standpoint, there are some considerations there. So we got a meeting on the books to knuckle down on that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks. Anyone else? Well, thank you both for coming in tonight. We really appreciate the update, and we look forward to this project moving forward.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. Thanks. You bet.
Okay. Item four is the consent agenda. Item A is a motion to approve city council minutes of April 18, 2022. Item B, licenses. Approve renewal of Class E liquor, Class C beer, Class B wine, and Sunday sales for Walgreen number 11153. Renewal of Class C liquor, Class A special beer, outdoor service, and Sunday sales for Iowa Project Brewing Company. Renewal of Class A liquor and Sunday sales for Loyal. Order of Moose Lodge number 496. Renewal of Class E liquor, Class C beer, Class B wine, and Sunday sales for Hy-Vee Store. And new Class B permit with Sunday sales for Axaholics at 331 11th Street Southwest, all subject to final approval by the Iowa ABD. Item C is a motion to set a hearing date for May 16, 2022, at 6:30 PM for a budget amendment for fiscal year 2021-2022 budget. Item D is a resolution authorizing permanent transfer of funds of budgeted transfers for the month ending April 30, 2022. Item E is a motion to approve the purchase of Toro Grand Master 3200D from Midwest Turf and Irrigation for $25,665. And purchase of two used reel master 3550 fairway mowers from The Ridge Golf Club in Sioux Center for $45,000 total for the golf course, both are CIP items for fiscal year 2022 and 2023. Item F is a motion to approve the purchase of a 2023 Elgin Road Wizard mechanical sweeper from McQueen Equipment, Ankeny, Iowa for $329,727. This is a CIP item. Item G is a resolution approving contract and performance bond for the 2022 SealCo project with Blacktop Service Company. And item H is a resolution approving contract and performance bond for 2022 Cotton's first edition storm sewer extension project with Vanderpoel Excavating. Motion made by Tom.
Second.
And seconded by Donovan. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Chris, aye.
Okay, thanks. Getting his name first.
Yep.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye. Hanson, aye.
Okay. Consent agenda is approved. Item five, we have a public hearing on plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for construction of the 2022 NPRL intermediate cover project Northern Plains Regional Landfill. I declare the public hearing now open. Any written comments against?
We have none.
Any oral comments against? Any written comments in favor of?
We have none.
Any oral comments in favor of? I declare the public hearing now closed. Item 5A1 is a resolution finally approving and confirming planned specification and form of contract for 2022 NPRL intermediate cover project Northern Plains Regional Landfill. Motion made by Bill.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Lauren. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye. Hanson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. The bids for the project were received last Thursday?
Yes.
Last Thursday? And Ross, did you want to address us with regard to those bids?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Just a quick reminder, this project, we do carry a real fill around the slopes of the landfill. As part of the base bid, there was also a grid that was going to go up on the top.
Cells. We did also include an alternate, which is alternate number one, and that was to pretty much eliminate the grid on the top and just cover the whole top with 12 inches of intermediate cover. So we did end up getting five bids. They're a pretty wide range of prices, but the low bid was Leroy &amp; Sons Incorporated out of Arcadia, Iowa. Their total bid was $242,731.60, and that number was, looks like 86, right at 87% of the engineer's estimate. And so, I guess as part of the alternate, we don't necessarily think we're probably going to use that whole quantity. So that number, the alternate number probably gets reduced a little bit as a unit price contract. And so, I guess it would be our recommendation to award the base bid and alternate number one of the project to Leroy &amp; Sons, Inc.
Okay. Any questions for Ross?
Ross, there's a few outline items where there's a big difference in the amounts. Any reasoning behind that? Realizing they're private bids, but...
Yeah. You know, it's probably kind of however they're putting their total number together. You know, some guys base the numbers a little differently on the, you know, the prices that, or the item that they're putting their price on. I'm guessing that's probably what that is.
You have a history with this company?
We do. They actually constructed one of the last cells that was built over there. So yeah, they have a good reputation with us, I guess, so.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, Ross. Okay. I would entertain a motion for the resolution of awarding the contract for 2022 NPRL intermediate cover project Northern Plains Regional Landfill to Leroy &amp; Sons for $242,731.60.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Lauren.
Second.
Seconded by Tracy. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Chris, aye.
Okay. Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye. Hanson, aye.
Okay. Thank you. Item six, old business. Item A is an ordinance establishing the City of Spencer 2022 25th Street Southwest Sanitary Sewer District and establishing sanitary sewer connection fees in the district. This is the final filing.
I'll make a motion on that.
Motion made by Ron. Seconded by Tom. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Aye, Teresa.
Okay. Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye. Hanson, aye.
Okay. Item B is an ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter Five, Section One of the Spencer City Code to allow as permitted uses, single-family residential, duplex residential, and multifamily residential uses in the CBD zoning district. This is the final filing. Motion made by Brian.
Second.
Seconded by Donovan. Any discussion?
I just thank Alec and the department plus Planning and Zoning for the time they put into this. It's a lot of good work, in my opinion. And I think we're doing, taking some steps to get some things cleared up that will make things for development and growth a lot easier down the road. So I appreciate that effort.
Okay. Anyone else? Please vote by machine.
Chris, aye.
Okay. Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye. Hanson, aye.
Okay. Item C is an ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter Five, Section Four, Subsection B of the Spencer City Code to clarify requirements for exterior wall coverings in the CBD zoning district. This, too, is the final filing.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Brian.
Second.
Seconded by Tom. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Teresa, aye.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Reed, aye. Balk, aye.
Item Seven, under New Business. Item A is a motion to approve job descriptions for Deputy City Manager, City Clerk, and Deputy City Clerk. And this was heard by the Personnel Committee on April 14, and our HR Director Jessica Wright is going to explain the rationale and for these changes.
Thank you. Good evening. So in your packet, you should have both the job description of the proposed Deputy City Clerk position as well as the revised job description for the Deputy City Manager and City Clerk. As we do with any opening that we have at the city, I was reviewing the job description with, in this case, Teresa as the outgoing City Clerk. Sorry, did you want me to wait? Okay. Okay. So because Teresa is retiring, she and I were going over the current job description, which we had just started doing recently anyway, because when my position as HR was added, those HR duties that Teresa had been doing transferred to me. And previous to that, when Brian's position was created, the finance pieces were transferred to Brian. So Teresa and I did many drafts of what the new City Clerk position would look like. And then we had the conversation with Dan and also with Brian, we've, because it will impact him as well, about changing the position so that it's not the City Clerk, but a Deputy City Clerk position, because the remaining duties just made more sense at the Deputy City Clerk level rather than paying for a Department Head level position. And it would allow some more cross-training to happen between finance if it was under Brian's position as well. So in your packet, the red is the changes for Brian's position, and the blue is the work that would transfer over as City Clerk, because we have to have a City Clerk in title that would go to Brian. And he already does many of those functions. The day-to-day work would be done by the Deputy City Clerk, and those duties would be a full-time position, but doesn't warrant the grade that the Department Head would require.
Okay. Any questions for Jessica on this? I think that Jessica and Teresa and Brian and everybody, all the city staff have done a nice job with this, and the Personnel Committee as well, when they heard about these changes. Good conversation.
Yeah, it will have a savings of about $11,000 to the taxpayers per year.
Okay.
Any questions?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks for your work on that.
You're welcome.
So I would entertain the motion to approve those job descriptions at this time.
I'll make that motion through.
Motion made by Donovan.
Second.
Second by Lauren. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. And under New Business, Items B and C, Brian, did you want to address those?
Yeah, Mayor. Staff had conversations with SMU this afternoon and this morning on implementation and raised a couple of questions that we think would be pertinent to flesh out before, so we would ask that both those items be removed, and we'll bring them back in a future meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Item D is a motion to approve professional services contract with Cruz Kate Nelson, PC for 2022 Riverview Cemetery Fifth Edition Plating Project. Motion made by Bill. Second by Tracy. Excuse me. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. Item E is a motion to approve professional services contract with Cruz Kate Nelson, PC for 2022 West Leach Park Trail Bridge Bank Stabilization Project. Motion made by Tom.
Second.
Second by Donovan. Any discussion? Ross, do you want to address this at all here? Or Jared, what's, what happened with this bridge?
Good evening. So this is the pedestrian bridge on the trail in West Leach Park going over the river. Last year, we noticed that the river was starting to cut into the bank, into the sheet piling of the bridge. So this is just kind of preventative maintenance, keeping up on maintenance, kind of stabilize that bank so it doesn't cut back any further and deteriorate that bridge and cause it to be unsafe, so.
And will this, will this cause the trail to be closed for any length of time?
Um, I don't have that answer yet. The idea is just to bring in some riprap and some gravel along that bank to kind of shore that up. I got to talk with Jim a little bit more on if that would be closed or not, but...
Okay. Thanks, Jared. Any other questions for Jared? Okay. Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. Item F is a motion to approve professional services contract with Cruz Kate Nelson, PC for 2022 Spencer Library Roof Replacement Project. Motion made by Lauren.
Second.
Second by Bill. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G is a motion to approve change order number three for Fire Engine Unit 992 from Feld Fire for an increase of $13,538.17 for a heat pan, pump compartment heater, and gasket installation, and slide-out compartment drawers.
Who got that?
Tom. And motion made by Tom, second by Lauren. Any discussion?
Chief, can you give us an update on this? What's going on? I know we got a letter in our packets, but for the public's sake.
Yeah. Tom, you're right. We did get an email from Deputy Chief Stover detailing the changes here, but I think Tom's right that the public probably wants to know what's going on with these change orders.
For sure. Good morning, or good evening, Mayor, citizens, and council. When we're making a purchase on a vehicle, we realize that the vehicle's longevity is going to be 20-plus years, and with that in mind, as we're making, you know, specific specifications, as we are looking at it, these were left out, and they were failed to be drawn up by Feld at the time. And we know in our theater of operation, as said on your cover letter, as we address that, the idea of a heat pan, as far as the heating and as far as the gasket, it's giving a fire engine the operational capacity to operate in colder temperatures and operate throughout. As far as the drawing, the drawing is also for immediate access to pertinent equipment at a fire scene.
Questions for Chief?
Chief, I guess, who put together the spec for the truck?
Starting, we started with three different bidders, and we did that in-house as well as going through different vendors of equipment.
One of the things I noticed is it seems like, which I appreciate, you know, your department's doing a really nice job of having kind of uniformed trucks setups, it seems like, which makes sense in an emergency situation, high stress. If they're laid out in similar fashion, everyone knows where everything is, right?
Correct. We want parity.
Right. Appreciate that. Does the other truck currently have a heat pan?
All of our fleet does, and that's something that I emphasized in the cover letter as well, that we want to keep parity with all our units, and this one failed. And the thing that was really recognizable is on the final walkthrough with factory representation, as well as our truck committee, that this wasn't on board, and we know that we need this to operate.
Yeah, appreciate that. And I'm coming new to this, so I apologize if I'm asking something the group's kind of touched on.
No, no, you're doing your due diligence.
I appreciate that. So to that point, then, I guess that's what I'm getting at. Reading through the email, it seems like we've had some challenges, unfortunately, with the company, which that's neither here nor there, but kind of how did this get missed? This is a $13,000 change order for equipment that seems like is standard on the other trucks, something we would need and want.
Yep.
And so it maybe should have been there in the beginning.
We feel the same way, and there's no doubt about it. We, as a consumer, feel the same way. It would be like ordering a car and not having a window crank to crank down the window. And it's like, oh, by the way, you're supposed to ask for it. And, you know, we believe what we perceive, and we were thinking that we were making that purchase. That's why we went with the company that we did for the parity and, you know, have that. And not to have it, I'd rather have it knowing that we did our due diligence, and we did find out, and we went accordingly. We could talk more later as far as, you know, what to do in hindsight. But this is, I think they did a really good job, and they've been very commendable with their, you know, follow-through on getting some other details and some other items.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Curiosity, would the second bidder that had this included, would they have been in the ballpark, or would it?
To say the second bidder, the second bidder would have been even more.
Even with adding the $13,000?
With this on board as well. And, you know, Councilman Balk is absolutely right. One of my biggest rationale is to have a fleet that is parallel, that anything, you know, all the items, all the servicing work, you know, can all be performed by a company.
And then my question is, and I think I already know the answer to this, but just for the public's sake, the funding for the change order will come out of the Fire Reserve, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you, Council.
And I believe we have a first and a second on this. So with no further discussion, all in favor of approving this change order, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Thank you, Ron. Didn't mean to forget about you. Motion carries. Item H is a motion to approve permanent drainage easement, temporary construction easement, and SRF grass swale maintenance agreement with Quality Refrigerated Services in conjunction with the 2022 North Water Quality Project. Motion made by Bill.
Second.
Second by Donovan. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. Item Eight, Department Head Reports, Planning Department, Alec.
Hey, Steve, while they're walking up, they've put me under a tornado watch here, so if I happen to go off and I'm not answering any of your questions, it's because they sent us downstairs, all right?
Be safe.
Good to know.
Thank you.
You're in Oklahoma, correct? Or Kansas?
Correct.
He was. Okay. Thanks, Councilman Reed, for that vote of encouragement for Councilman Hanson.
The meeting's not that important, Ron. You go if you need to. Thank you.
Okay. That's a hard act to follow, Alec.
Yeah, yeah. Well, good evening, everyone. So on the Planning Department, over the past month, we've seen pickup in building permits as the weather gets nicer, hopefully continues to get nicer, and we see some more sunshine. We've had a lot of good conversations with locals about development here in town, particularly in the green industrial parks, so we're hoping to see that come to council sometime soon here in the next month. We've run into a few challenges with HPC's RFP for the second-floor accessibility study. We worked with the state to resend out those proposals and get an extension on some of our timetables there after working with the HPC to try and expand on what meetings could be virtual, what meetings could be done to save costs, and we'll send, we sent those out again, and we'll revisit them in a month here, hopefully. So the state was willing to work with us on that, which was great. On top of some of the preliminary more economic development stuff, very recently, as in today, we got, we've started to get some letters from our local third graders here in town, trying to promote economic development in town, and it's been fantastic to hear from them. So I'm trying to get in touch with those teachers to make sure we get those responses to them and promote those little...
...
Sorry. To promote the economic development in town, these young entrepreneurs deserve some level of response. So on that note as well, as the city's getting nicer and we're on par with, you know, cleanup in town, I want to reach out and say, hey, citizens, snow's gone, yards are starting to get dried up from the winter. Let's help by picking up sticks and moving trash and such into their perspective receptacles. It will help everyone in the long run. Other than that, does anyone have any questions for the Planning Department?
Yeah, Alec, just to refresh the public's knowledge, and probably ours too, with regard to the second-floor accessibility study that was done for the Historic Preservation Commission, and that was a grant proposal, correct? And with some city funding, I think we approved, what, $5,000?
Yes. We have a total budget cost of $20,587, in conjunction with a grant through the state historical program, to look at the second floors of our downtown district, find what accessibility challenges that they face, and come up with some creative ways to help promote growth in our upper stories. That is the goal of the study.
Okay. Okay. Thanks. Any other questions for Alec? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Library, Sarah Bass.
Good evening. The library's chugging along. We'll get over the HVAC stuff first. So Cryer and Blaine were here and replaced the part they were waiting on, and so their current job is done. However, earlier last week, balancing professionals was here to test everything, and they found some other issues that need to get fixed before they can finish their testing and balancing. So Mark White has graciously volunteered himself and Mark Craig to kind of cover that for me. Otherwise, daily visits to the library keep creeping closer towards pre-COVID numbers. We've got a full lineup of programming coming up. Next week is going to be especially busy. We have a Princess Diana reenactor coming on Tuesday. Friday evening, we'll have a concert with Melanie Devaney, who's a folk singer-songwriter. And then Saturday, the 14th, Jennifer Loeb, who is a mountain climber, and she has climbed the highest peak on each of the seven continents now, will be coming to talk about her experiences. So next week's going to be a big one for programming, and then, of course, we are gearing up for summer reading program, which will kick off on May 27, from 12:30 to 5:00. We'll have our registration kickoff party right as school gets out, so... Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much. Fire, Chief?
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor, citizens at home. Your Spencer Fire Department answered... Your Spencer Fire Department answered thirty-two emergency call, emergency medicine calls, including, uh, some fall victims, uh, OB complications, head trauma, uh, possible strokes, difficulty breathing, overdoses, allergic reactions, chest pain and seizures, just to include a few. Your fire department answered sixteen fire calls, which includes a house fire that was on the West Fourth Avenue. Uh, we had numerous grass fires, uh, this past month. Thank you for the rain. We had a couple of food on the stove fires as well. We have a few odor calls and a couple of investigations as well as a fluid cleanup. Your ambulance one oh four, that's housed in our fire station, answered some calls for fall victims, trauma victims, shortness of breath, as well as pneumonia, and we did answer a car accident. Our special duty this last month was we, uh, we stood standby for, uh, police while they conducted a special operation. And we've done this numerous times, uh, throughout our year. But this is what we did there. Training included, unit hose testing, starting with our five inch supply. Doing hose testing is performed annually and it ensures that we have proper seats and seals on all hoses, as well as, you know, ensuring there's no dry, rotten aged, uh, you know, age of any of the, uh, possible products. We also went ahead and, uh, have done evac training as well as TIMS. Evac training is emergency vehicle operation training where every member had the opportunity to get behind the wheel and go through a set course. This course is, uh, a two-part series. One part is classroom to talk about what it's like to operate an emergency vehicle. The attendance, the idea of where your head should be at. The second part of the course is to truly operate. And, uh, having a partner with Clay County and the event center really allowed us to, uh, you know, come through with this. The other part was doing TIMS, traffic incident management portion of it. Traffic incident management is how we keep, you know, ourselves safe on the street. Are we wearing reflective vests? More and more firefighters and first responders are passing because of unattentive drivers. So we need to continue to keep ourselves safe. And having this training definitely provides that opportunity. Um, we've also done a little bit of ladder testing. Ladder testing, we do all our ground ladders annually and we just got done testing our mechanical ladder, which is a test that needs to be done every five years. And this is, ensures not only the seats and seals, but also the idea of if there's any drift, you know, is there a weight load? Is there also a functionality of when we're doing fire flow with a ladder? And these are all items that needed to be covered and they were definitely covered. Lastly, we went ahead and I, we sent three people to the art of reading smoke. What's in the art of reading smoke? The idea of your first immediate size up, what type of smoke is being emitted from a house? Is it fast? Is it furious? Not to coin a movie, but how, how is it? Is it dark? Is it puffing? Is it slow? These are all different things that helps create a tactical awareness and a situational awareness of the crews on scene. So, yep, we were a little bit busy and the, what I really enjoy is that, uh, this month, we're going to have, uh, two different tests for our Fire One class. This Fri- this Saturday, they have a written practical. And then two Saturdays on the twenty-first, they have their, uh, physical practical for, uh, becoming a firefighter one for the state of Iowa. And that's what's going on with your fire department right now. Any questions?
Thanks. How many are in that class?
Uh, right now, we have seven. Good deal. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Chief. Police, Chief Warburton?
Good evening. Uh, the Spencer Police Department responded to seven hundred and seventy calls for service month of April and we performed thirty-four arrests. Um, April seemed to be the, uh, career, uh, job interviews, um, for the, uh, Spencer student body. Uh, April thirteenth, we interviewed, uh, several students who, uh, revolved their careers class in Mr. Wentz's, uh, high school room, as well as April twenty-ninth, uh, Mayor Baumgars and the police department interviewed several middle schools, middle schoolers as part of their career day experience. So, uh, that was a well-attended event and it was fun for everybody, both interviewer and, uh, so kudos to the middle school kids that actually came in and actually had jobs. So that was great to see. This month, officers attended a mental health first responder seminar at the Crossroads Pavilion, uh, Center in Sheldon. Uh, this training brought forward new techniques, uh, for law enforcement when dealing with subjects, uh, having a mental health crisis. Ways to, uh, avoid these crises without bringing them to jail. So we look forward to, uh, thoroughly investigating those techniques. Also, April thirtieth was the National Drug Takeback. The police took approximately fifty pounds of unused medication in. I would like to remind the public that they can drop off medication Monday through Friday at the police department, eight to four. That's all I have. Any questions?
Okay. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Chief?
Sorry.
Question for you. Uh, could you, and maybe the mayor's going to mention this, there's going to be some construction on the railroad as well as the police department. Are there any dates there so public kind of, I have to aware of what's going on?
I believe it's the sixteenth.
You're going to do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
There you go.
And you and I had a conver- interesting conversation. Several, one, one day last week, the railroad was dumping rock and we had significant closure on Grand Avenue.
Correct.
And just walk through for the public of what we can do as a city and what we cannot do as a, for this, as a city.
Sure.
If your police department is specific.
So in this event, uh, the railroad crossing arms were down for a considerable amount of time, uh, with no train visible on Grand Avenue. And what happened was, was that the train, railroad cars were dispersing rock, um, just to the west side of Grand Avenue. And I believe the, the trip sensor did not trip on the, on the railroad crossing and the arms were down. Now unfortunately, the police department just doesn't have a magic button that we can push and raise the arms up, right? Uh, this is, comes from the railroad. And so part of this new construction process will adopt, uh, the new changes there to keep those arms from staying down. The railroad's making a conscious effort to make this right. We just, we, as the police department, when we get those calls, we just can't make a railroad move. There are certain federal regulations that they have to go through and they have to see those out and which supersedes Spencer City ordinance. So, and, and unlike most people, they want to get moved and we understand that. It's just, it is what it is type of thing. Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Chief. Uh, don't, don't run away yet.
You didn't have any when we first, so we figured you didn't have any now.
Yeah, he does. He does. So, think of some more questions.
Yeah, yeah.
With regard to the crossing, I, I did get caught in that, uh, with the bars down and, and all that. And, and it, it was frustrating and I'm sure that everyone else who was caught in that, uh, was frustrated as well, especially not seeing a train, uh, across the crossing. But I really appreciate your, your explanation of that. And then I'd like to circle back to the middle school interviews. That, it was very good to see, uh, you there and we had, uh, some other, uh, city people there and we had a great, uh, uh, outpouring of support from the community. And I think that those kids at the middle school who were interviewing for jobs, uh, and in their career class, it was a very good experience for them to, uh, go, go up and, and, uh, have that interview with adults and they were very well prepared. I, I enjoyed it thoroughly.
Yeah, it was good for them and it was refreshing for us. To actually see some excitement and a lot of these, uh, the students, well, this was their first job. Some of them had just, you know, just started a job and this was their, really their first interview and, um, it was refreshing for us too. It was fun.
It was. Yep. Thanks a lot.
You bet. Any other questions before I leave?
Public Works, Mark?
Good evening.
And we'll hear more about the, uh, crossing on Grant, I'm sure.
Yeah, we'll get to that. So, uh, for the, the last month, uh, Street Division worked and assisted the Gulf with the new fuel tank installation, pulled all the snow fence with all the area fields and got ready. We also, at the same time, evaluate the condition of that and have already ordered the replacement fence and disposed of the stuff that didn't make it through so well. Where you moved all the snow equipment, you know, and that sounds easy and it, but in, that means taking all the sanders out and washing and oiling them up. We're also on some of the trucks we use a little more often. We've made the decision to remove the underbelly scrapers for the season, which helps us do a little better maintenance with those as well. And I think it's a little safer operation when those aren't underneath the trucks, uh, with some summer projects. Started sweeping. It'll be a lot easier now with that new sweeper that you approved, so we appreciate that. Uh, we've also been, uh, filling potholes, uh, the sewer program. We talk about that quadrant that we continually work on. It seems like there's a fair amount of roots that we've encountered in some areas that have required some maintenance. Cleaning out intakes. Anytime we get a little rain early on in the spring, that's always the time that some of those plugged intakes show up. A lot of sign work that gets put off during the winter when the ground is frozen and we can't replace the posts. So those have all been taken care of and, uh, thank you for the patience on Fourth Avenue West. We kind of have our annual frost boil situation there and the road was closed for a while, but we've got it, uh, shaped up and back, back open again. Also been screening compost at the, uh, at the, uh, tree and leaf site, which leads to one of the next topics. We do have a new sign at the tree and leaf site that says, uh, no, uh, firewood harvesting. Basically what that means is folk used to go out and cut the firewood from the piles that were out there because of the unfortunate situation with the Emerald Ash Bore, that's no longer allowed to transport that firewood. So there's a new sign. We tried to place it so everybody could see it when they come in. So hopefully we can, uh, get compliance. Also, we did have safety training last month. Uh, just last week, it was flagging and job site, setting up work zone safety, um, the Street Division and, uh, other folks have been through that. We build a pump shelter, uh, for an engine-driven pump that we use at the, uh, wastewater treatment plant. And appreciate all the departments, uh, giving a hand and helping with the, uh, spring ditch cleaning that we do to make that go a little faster. So as we move into the hot topic of the railroad crossing, Monday, the sixteenth, uh, the road will close, uh, nine AM is when it's scheduled. The DOT will, uh, establish an official DOT detour around the city, which is around the East Beltway, Highway eighteen and around. There will not be an, a, a local detour. It will simply be closed and the local traffic will have to find their way, which I think they will, and normally do anyway, when you set up, uh, in, inside the city limits. So, um, uh, close the road on nine, nine AM at, uh, May sixteenth, mill approaches, uh, cut the headers, stockpile ballast. On Tuesday, the seventeenth, remove the track panels, excavate the ballast fiber, uh, fabric, start welding the joints and, and I'm just kind of highlighting a little bit. On Wednesday, the track panels, uh, will be removed, excavate ballast. Sixty tons of, of ballast will be placed. On Thursday, they weld the joints. And Friday, um, they'll be starting to pu- put it back together with the headers and, uh, they expect to be open on Tuesday, I believe, the following Tuesday. So about nine days, hard closure, completely closed on Grand Avenue. So that will, uh, it'll be worth the wait because we'll have a new crossing and upgraded safety, uh, safety improvements. This will be a DOT slash railroad project, joint project.
Mark, will the city or the DOT be responsible for notifying the businesses? There's a few businesses that will be primarily affected by this. I think they'll be able to make some accommodations, but are we going to be notifying them or will it be the DOT?
We have made the decision just to reach out on our own to help, just help educate and hopefully facilitate a little easier movement for them. So, uh, there, there isn't too much that'll be affected. Um, PD will be part of it. Of course, we have the police department side, or driveway, parking lot, excuse me, lost my train of thought there for a moment. Parking lot project that'll just, just kind of following this and there's a little bit of coordination there with, uh, decommissioning a storm line and changing an intake. And so there, there's a little work and the city will have some sidewalk approaches and some things. But, uh, it's, uh, it's a good project. That, that crossing is in need and, uh, one of the challenges it has is with the spur line and the main line, so it's two, the two rails, that adds a little different there. So.
So if you see the mayor stuck at this road closure, can you help him out?
I just wave.
Thanks.
To the mayor's defense, he did mention the railroad crossing early as well. He was on top of it with, when he gave his report. So. But I'll smile when I wave, is what I'll do.
Appreciate that. Thanks, Tom. Okay. Parks and Recreation, Jared?
Good evening again. Yeah, so I just wanted to touch on Emerald Ash Bore a little bit. Still want to try to get the word out to all those citizens, um, out there that Emerald Ash Bore has been confirmed here, uh, in Spencer. Last week, we held a public meeting, uh, for those, uh, citizens to come and learn a little bit more about the Emerald Ash Bore itself, as well as some signs and symptoms, um, what they should be looking for and, and what an ash tree looks like. So they can identify that stuff in their yards as well. As well as some different treatment options, removal options, uh, that sort of thing. So that, we did record that, um, that has been uploaded to YouTube as well as SMU has a, a recording of that. We will have link to that on our website as well as, um, Iowa State Extension has different informational pamphlets on that, um, as well as Iowa Department of Agriculture and Land Stewardship. Mike Kitner, the entomologist, put that program on, did a really nice job, um, explaining that and answering those questions. Right now, we are working on our plan to prioritize, uh, different areas, uh, for public city trees, as well as giving the homeowner, uh, those options of, um, treatment on those trees. But in the process, we have to do a little ordinance change, uh, which we'll be bringing forward as well too. So be on the lookout for that. Any questions, feel free to, you know, call Iowa Department of Agriculture. Um, I can answer some of those questions as well. But, uh, feel free to give us that call. Yeah, Tom.
Before you move on, can you just touch on the treatment of the trees? In case the public decides to go out and do something with that now, if they think they've got a tree and.
Yeah, so.
There's some limit, or there's some cautionary things with that, right?
Yeah. So when you're dealing with chemicals, there's, there's always some cautions and make sure to follow, uh, label directions, but there are some over the counter options to do that in, uh, your private yard. There are some chemical options for those. So I would encourage folks to read the label instructions and follow those very closely. You know, as far as if you get over a certain size, we would recommend, um, having a professional do it, a certified chemical applicator. Do that and we'd like to have, you know, any of those applicators just, um, drop their information off with us so we can keep a running list if people have questions or want to know who those chemical applicators are. We have that information. So I would just encourage people to explore all their options, look at all the safety regulations and, um, be cognizant of, of those.
Okay. I think Jared, uh, the meeting was very good and the, the speaker was really good, presentation was. Just side note, I find myself now looking at bark to see if that's a tree. Are we going to be sending, um, uh, is there somebody that's marked people's trees that, hey, if you get this letter, you must have an ash tree on your.
We haven't. So, so I've developed, um, a letter to go to the I, the areas that we've identified ash trees on in some of those priority areas. Initially, we won't send that out to everybody that has a public ash tree. But right now, we're focusing more on some of those busier streets, safer routes to schools, along our park system. And we will have a letter out to those here within the next week or so. Letting them know, hey, you do have an ash tree on your public right of way. Here's your options and here, uh, here's how we're going to handle it. So. Any other questions related to Emerald Ash Bore? Okay, um, so our tennis court project, um, unfortunately, we did not receive, uh, that Wellmark grant funding, um, for that. So, um, what we'd like to do is get back together with, uh, Park Board, the Parks and Rec Committee of the Council, as well as a school representative. Um, we do have a Park Board meeting on May tenth. I would like to try to schedule that with the Parks Committee. Um, I've heard from the school, they will be sending a representative as well as the Parks, uh, Park Board. They, they're able to make that on May tenth at five o'clock. We can adjust the time if need be. But right now, it's, it's set for, for five o'clock. We just want to go over options. Since we didn't receive that grant funding, we didn't receive any bids for that particular project. And the cost of that seems to be going up outside of what we had budgeted. So we want to just reevaluate our options and what those costs are and, and make a determine on, determination on where we want to move forward with that. So.
Where's that meeting going to be?
Here in the conference room. Five PM.
Thought it was May eleventh.
Should be next Tuesday.
A week from tomorrow. Yeah, it'd be the tenth.
A week from tomorrow. Yeah, it'd be the 10th.
The 10th. And then on the Wesley's Boat Ramp Project, they're starting to do, MLS is starting to do locates for those. I think they'll be bringing in equipment here this week with a potential start on that, depending on weather here next week. Had the insurance, our insurance company, look at the Rocket Slide again yesterday. They have reviewed that and have okayed that. So we're, from a safety aspect, so that's a really good step moving forward. We're getting quotes for the site preparation work and we should have those by Friday afternoon to review those as well. Programming, food truck event, the first one is next Friday, May 13th, at Deerfield Park. And it starts at 6:00, so we'll have several different food trucks as well as she's with us as the musical entertainment for that. And then a couple other things finally. Just thank all the groups for the parks cleanups and different businesses and schools and classrooms that have gone out and cleaned up and used the litter trailer and cleaned up several of our parks, which has given us a big help and it's been a great thing to see. So thank you, Mayor, for that initiative. But also a reminder out at the dog park to clean up your dog waste. We do have a lot of dog stations with dog waste bags out there. So just a reminder to please clean up after your dog while you're out there so other people can enjoy that area as well. And then finally, I'd like to welcome Kevin Robinson as our new Seminary Superintendent who officially starts today.
With that, any questions?
Thanks, Jared.
All right, thank you.
Golf Course, Brian.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I apologize for being a few minutes late this evening. First thing I'd like to start off with is I've been getting a lot of people contacting me and talking about enlarging the greens at the municipal golf course. So I just wanted to clarify on that a little bit. Back when we did the construction in 1999, everything was laid out. The borders of all the greens, the fairways, the tees, everything was set to a, to a certain design. Over the years, as you mow greens, you're having two different heights of cut of grass that are growing next to one another. And it's just natural habit for a human being to always err on the side of caution so they don't get the reel as close to the other cut of grass because it's going to scalp it and leave a mark. So over the years, after doing that slowly over and over, you've decreased the square footage of the playing surface. So alls we are trying to do is to reestablish those original parameters for the areas on the golf course. So I hope that answers any questions that folks out there have and we're just trying to get it back to where it was on day one.
Can't you just hit it straighter? I'm just hoping I can hit a couple more greens.
Yeah. Well, yeah. Secondly, last year, on March 20th, we were in full maintenance operation mode at the golf course. We were mowing the entire course multiple times a week. This year, we've only mowed our greens three times and our tees a couple times and nothing else. So 100% what this comes down to is what's the soil temperature? It's the same with farmers. It's the same with anybody that's trying to grow grass. The soil temperature is so cold, we still had a few valve boxes last week that were completely full of ice. We couldn't even see the valve on the golf course. It was just a solid block of ice. So the grass is not going to start growing until the soil temperatures increase. We can't fertilize it when the soil temperatures are low because the nutrients are just going to leach through the soil profile and not be taken in by the plant. We can't spray for weeds, same scenario. Once the soil temperature gets up, we're going to start seeing a lot of dandelions everywhere. And when we have some nice days, we'll start addressing those, some herbicide applications and also with some pre-emergent for crabgrass in some areas on the golf course. We're just way behind where we were last year with a lot of things. So we're, we'll get to it when the, when time allows us to. And then lastly, I'd just like to invite the public to visit our website at spencermunigolf.com. They can go to our blog if they want to read about the updates at the golf course. They can log in with their email address to subscribe to the weekly updates. Sometimes they need to check their spam for those because it doesn't always go through to your inbox. And I think by checking those out, that might help answer some questions that folks have. And also, you're always fully able to get in touch with me anytime with questions, so. Any questions from anyone?
Thanks, Brian. City Attorney's Report, Don.
Thank you, Mayor. April was somewhat busier than average month. Activities in many departments, nothing stood out. But there's two things I would like to comment about tonight. One is good news and one is less good news. The good news is there was one lawsuit in which the city was a defendant, where it was alleged that the city caused some problems that led to a sewer backup into a basement. This was in the West Knight Street area back in 2019. That suit was being defended by the city's insurance carrier. And the city was prevailed on summary judgment. That suit is now over. It didn't cost the, the insurance company didn't pay anything and the city didn't pay anything. So we're not in court as of today. Less good news, at least in my opinion, from somebody from the city of Spencer is Senate File 2285, which the legislature enacted and the mayor, the governor has signed. Here's the phrase that impacts the city maybe more than any other city in the state. It provides that the city, a city shall not adopt or enforce any regulation or restriction under this chapter to regulate, restrict, or prohibit the location of permanent buildings or temporary structures used for the sale of consumer fireworks in any location zone for commercial or industrial purposes. To summarize that, the legislature has said people can sell fireworks in any area that's zoned either commercial or industrial with no control whatsoever by the city. It seems to me, at least in the city of Spencer, that may be not the best idea, but...
From a historical perspective, for sure.
Any questions?
Okay.
Thanks, Don.
Item 9, Engineers Report, Ross.
Good evening again. I've got multiple projects I'm going to touch on quickly. First of all, the 2021 Intake Replacement Project. Corey Jurgens has been trying to work on those replacements for the last couple of weeks. He's got four of them complete. He's got five left. Most of the five that are left are in the northeast side of town, up towards the middle school. He's hoping to be done in the next two weeks for that project. Next one Jared touched on briefly is the Wesley's Boat, or Wesley's Park Boat Ramp Replacement Project. I did meet with MLS last Friday. They are planning to start mobilizing equipment this week and hopefully get started towards the end of the week. The other, next one is the Spencer PD Parking Lot Replacement. We do have a pre-construction meeting scheduled for this Friday. Diamond Concrete is the general contractor on that project. We will be trying to coordinate with the DOT shutdown because we do have a little work to do on the highway or in the highway right of way, both. As part of that project, we're redirecting some of the storm sewer to the north instead of out to the highway right of way, which will separate that storm water from the sanitary sewer. So we'll be looking to coordinate with the highway project and Spencer PD to make sure they have access to the building at all times. Next project is the Cotton's First Edition Storm Sewer Extension. Those contracts were approved tonight. I believe they've called in locates already and as soon as their pipe gets here, they'll be starting that project. So I was told hopefully later in the week, so that should get started pretty shortly. The Drainage District Number 47 Outlet Project, which is out by Menards on the north side of the county road out there. Corey Jurgens Construction completed the excavation on that project and it was actually seeded last week by Northwest Landscaping, so that project is complete. And then just a quick update on the 25th Street and 11th Avenue Southwest Sewer Extension. Been working with Don on getting some easements prepared and hope to get those signed this week or work on getting them signed this week. And then we'll come back with some information for you and hopefully be ready to set a, a date for an assessment hearing at the next meeting, if everything comes together on that project. The other things I had were we got a couple bid lettings or quote openings, like Jared said, for the Rocket Slide site improvements. That's on Friday. And then the 2022 Water Quality Project bids next Thursday.
Any questions? Thanks, Ross.
Thank you.
City Managers Report, Dan.
I'm working on a, I think it's going to be kind of a neat project with a company called CGI Digital, who in conjunction with the National League of Cities, works with cities to provide free promotional videos to put on your website. I've been working with them for a little while. We're putting the finishing touches on the script and they're working on getting some shots and they'll be, they'll be filming here June 9th and 10th right before Flag Fest, so it should, they should get some really good video out of that. But along with that, they, since they do that all for free to the city, they got to make money somehow, so they will be marketing, advertising to go around our videos with the local businesses. So just to let the businesses know, that's going to be legit. That's not just, that's not a scam. There'd be, CGI Digital will be contacting. The city doesn't have to, they don't have to sell any ads to get our videos, but... So it's up to, completely up to the business whether they want to entertain these people or not. But I think it'll be pretty neat. Several, I've looked at some samples from some other towns. Clinton's the one I can think of off the top of my head, but there are seven or eight cities in Iowa that have already done this. Algonis is working on it as well. So I thought we could take advantage of that and it should be a pretty neat deal for visitors to our website to see what Spencer's all about.
Thanks, Dan. Item 11, under the Mayor's Report. First of all, I'd like to thank all of the citizens who took part in the city cleanup. I know that's already been touched on a little bit tonight, but we had two weekends where several service organizations, church groups, school groups and neighborhoods really went out and really went above and beyond and helped us clean up a lot of the public areas. I think we even had to add some public areas to the list that we originally had. So big thank you to everyone who took part in that. Looks great. Secondly, the Historic Preservation Commission has their May Lecture Series coming up. And the first lecture is tomorrow night and it will be here in the council chambers at 6:00. And the first program will be the history of the Spencer Golf and Country Club. And Adam Coats, the professional at the country club, will be presenting tomorrow night at 6:00. And then on Thursday this week at 6:00 in the council chambers, we'll have a presentation on the history of the Tangney Hotel. So if you can avail yourself of those, they'll be pretty interesting presentations, I'm sure. And then lastly, Northwest Iowa League of Cities is meeting on Thursday, May 19th in Storm Lake. So anybody on the council who would like to attend that, please let Teresa know and we'll get that reservation made. That's all I've got. Item 12, Counseling Committee Reports.
Regular meeting on the 16th and Park Rec and Culture, was that the one we were talking about that's the 10th?
Yeah.
Yes.
So that's on the 10th at 5:30?
Does that work?
5:00.
Does that work for everyone? Okay, that's good. That was easy. Okay, item 13 is a motion to approve the bills and claims. Motion made by Bill, second by Brian. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pos, nay, motion carries. Item 14, other business on opportunities to address the council. Okay? And item 15 is, before we go into this motion to go into closed session, I'd like Don to go over the ground rules for us once more.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just read the statute that describes the exception so we're all clear on the limits of our closed session. The exception is to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price the government body would have to pay. The minutes and audio recording of a session closed under this paragraph shall be available for public examination when the transaction discussed is completed. So it's, it's very limited. More general discussions about economic development in the community and weighing alternatives, probably not appropriate for closed session. We, we need to focus on a city consideration of purchase of particular real estate.
Okay.
And I believe tonight, there might be two parcels to be discussed.
Yes.
And because of this provision that the minutes and recording have to be made public, we're going to have to somehow separate the discussion of those two. Any questions?
Thank you for wearing the striped shirt. Okay, so item 15 is a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Section 21.5J of the Iowa Code Regarding Purchase or Sale of Particular Real Estate. Motion made by Bill, second by Tom. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Pos, nay. Thank you, Ron. Motion carries.
Ron's out of the basement.
Yeah, Ron's, Ron's okay. So this time, we will...